All right, welcome. We'll get started. I'm going to call the board, please.
The only one that's absent is Martha Harris, and I think she blew the absence by if I remember correctly.
So, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 15th.
Uh huh. Second?
The move is in seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Kim?
I'm sorry, Kim. Thank you. So, I was, Emel's not here as well, so I'm taking notes today, so, thank you.
Great. Any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay. This is the portion of the meeting for people who wish to address the board. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak with the board this evening? We'll belong to my report. So, we had an election. I don't know if people noticed. So, we have some new members. So, why don't we just start, and we'll all introduce ourselves, but if you're new, take a second to give us a little bit more background and sort of, you know, what your hopes are maybe for joining the board, and then we'll go from there. So, Keith, would you like to start?
This is the end of this conference time. Our next conference runs from 7:06 to 7:16.
We'll have that for the next hour because they can't shut it off in the library. So, every 12 minutes, you'll have that.
My name's Keith Miller. Board member from Newburgh.
I'm Maria. I'm a junior at Hampton, and I'm a student representative. Matt and Seidel from Hampton.
Rick Moore from Hampton.
Tony Libretorio from Hampton. Just joined the board. I have a daughter in third grade, daughter in first grade, and a son in diapers. So, I hope to see the education be as good, if not better, when my son gets out of diapers and in kindergarten as my daughter graduates from Hampton Academy.
My name is Lance Elhaja from Winterport.
Niles Parker from Hampton.
Kelly Bickmore, Newburgh.
Rick Lyons, Hampton Superintendent.
Jason Sharp from Hampton. Proud alumni, class of '91, and just very excited to be on the school board after 15 years in the corporate world. Really looking forward to bringing some of that expertise here to assist in the goal which Tony just talked about as we continue to look to drive our education here in Hampton in the 21st century.
Cindy Mitchell, Hampton.
Eric Carter, Frankfort.
Karen Hawkes, Hampton. I have a son who's in first grade. My daughter starts kindergarten next year. I'm not as elegant as Jason is, but my background tends to be community health, athletics, and occupational health, which is what I currently do. Just hoping to have some sort of impact that will benefit my kids and the community and open to how I proceed and the decisions I make.
At least you remembered your kids. I'm sorry. Daughter Kennedy, fifth grade, and Olivia in second grade.
We're in the corporate world.
John Cogshul, I'm from Winterport.
I'm Olivia Dower, and I'm a senior at Hampton Academy.
And certainly not least, but arriving now. Martha Harris from Winterport. Welcome, Martha. Okay. So, next week, just to remind folks that we're having our board retreat. And Rick, do you want to walk us through the schedule for that?
We will start at 6 o'clock with a dinner downstairs in the cafeteria. We'll come up here at 7 o'clock, and we have three presenters, Dr. Steve Powne, Karen Cole, and Colleen Quimp. Our three-pronged mission is to talk about leadership, marketing, succession planning for the school district. I've asked them to present, and then also obviously enter a conversation with us probably in an hour and a half or two hours that Wednesday evening. Then Thursday evening, we'll come back, and we'll revisit our existing strategic plan and look how we're going to modify that so that too can lead us into the 21st century. So, we have our existing plan, and hopefully our three presenters next week will give us more information by which we then can integrate and update our strategic plan to guide us over the next two to three years.
Great.
So, dinner Wednesday, no dinner Thursday though, unless you directly otherwise.
What time or then do we start Thursday night?
7 o'clock. So, 6 o'clock dinner, 7 o'clock board meeting, Wednesday retreat, Thursday evening start at 7 o'clock.
Estimated time of the length of the meeting on Thursday?
I would probably guess, John, an hour and a half, because that'll be the only item will be to reflect on the Wednesday night conversation, modify our existing strategic plans. I'd guess probably an hour and a half. Looking forward to it.
And the next item here under my report is subcommittee selection, so it is that time to be thinking about our subcommittees. The other, so what I need for you to do is, in your packet, can I have this?
Yes.
To take a look at what the actual pieces are, and then please email Rick and I your sort of top three, if you will, choices. I always urge someone to choose something, so if you're a finance guru, that's great to put yourself down for finance, but pick something that's going to stretch or challenge you as well. There's lots of nuanced kinds of business that's done within the school board, so it's good to be on a couple of different kinds of committees, and certainly we value your expertise in your certain subject areas too. If you feel really strongly about being on something, please let us know about that as well. For more tenured board members, each of our new board members will need a mentor, and so we'll need some volunteers to mentor the new folks. So, if you can let me know kind of at the end of this meeting, if you're willing, we will assign you a mentor. I can't, Rick Moore was my mentee, so I can't take any responsibility for how he turned out. So, sometimes we try to have a tiny bit of fun here, too. All right, so that's it for my, my report.
Under personnel, I have no resignations to report. We do have nominations, so if you would reference your agenda notes, we have Chris Gould, girls' basketball coach at the Wagner Middle School, Stephanie Sheehan is the boys' basketball coach at Wagner, Erica Lujie is cheering coach at Wagner, Renee Butler, varsity cheering here at Hampton Academy, and also two volunteers, Anna Schaler and Viber Carter. Actually, two there in Tamblood Winter Track. Normally, we take these as a slate, so I'd recommend those coaches as conveyed in the agenda notes, please.
I move that we approve those coaches as a slate.
Second? The move is in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Yes, Rick? Thank you.
Okay. Now, we go to the superintendent's report this evening, meeting on essential behavior. Now comes Eric.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools, our community support systems, and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate, and our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Eric. Item B is our ongoing discussion with respect to the data of our students in our RSU that are participating in alternative educational settings. So, if we look at the first exhibit for the benefit of the audience, we have, as of Monday, 59 children that are homeschooled in our school district. One student from the Virtual Charter Schools, one from a private school called Kings Broad Arrow in Carmel, one in Hebron Academy, one at Fair Winds Academy in Searsmont, seven at Penaskat Christian School, three in the White Orchard Academy, and I'm going to guess some of you may have never heard of these schools, because there's a couple in there I have never heard of, and that's one of them. Eric, are you familiar with that one, Eric?
No. I'm assuming that's, they do homeschooling there, I think.
Okay, all right. Little Ships Christian Academy, we have four students there, 15 children at the All Saints Catholic School in Bangor, 28 at Bangor Christian, and six at John Babs, for a total of 126 students that live in one of our four communities that participate in alternative educational settings.
It's over a million dollars.
Thank you, Lance, that's right. So, I believe that that information there dovetails very nicely with our marketing component that we're going to be discussing next Wednesday and hopefully coming up with some very nice strategies to recognize the fact that we do have over a million dollars, and we have 126 children that we really can seek out to hopefully participate in RSU 22 educational settings. I also include for your benefit the homeschool by age that was asked, and you can see there the distribution from age six to age 17, coming up with a 59. The high point is age 13 with nine youngsters, and also nine youngsters in age eight. Also, you can see in the year 2005, the state of Maine had 4,094 homeschoolers, and nine years later, we're about 1,000 more, at 5,025. So, you can see the continued upward spiral of that as well.
And continually shrinking student age population.
That's correct.
So, the percentage is actually higher.
That's correct. That's a great point. Tomorrow, the commission of the virtual school, of the charter school is voting on the second virtual school, so we'll watch that very carefully, and I'll let you know tomorrow what the decision of the commission is.
I think it will be positive.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think it will be positive.
That's worth reporting to me.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, you're just coming from the state board meeting, that's right, too. Yes. So, that will then bring two virtual schools, and I think we're up to, what, is it seven charter schools now? Seven, right, I'm sorry. But you're looking at about 10 alternative school settings now in our state within 24 months. So, any questions on the data that's presented to you this evening? Any questions, comments that people have?
With charter schools, you mentioned that theoretically RSU 22 could be their own?
Yes.
Is there, is there a committee that's looking into that, or is that just something that was?
It's been floated, Tony, in a couple of previous meetings over the last year or two. Matter of fact, Martha, I don't want to put you on the spot, and I know you mentioned one of the school meetings, when we talked about the innovative school concept whereby our own board could create a charter. So, maybe from the retreat, that might be something we might want to look at, is does that have a possibility or any feasibility with respect to what we're going to articulate in our strategic plan? But we certainly can have the mechanism to do that, Tony.
Okay.
I also learned one other thing today about charters. You know how they're not supposed to have to do standards-based education? All of the charters that are currently in existence are.
They're not required to, but they-
They can do it voluntarily, or the charter commission can insist on it as part of their charter. They've all done it voluntarily, so.
Interesting.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
Do we know how many families that is? Like, I'm just saying, because I know one family has like four or six kids, I think are all homeschooled.
I don't. I could find out, Jason, but I don't know from this data here, though.
Because I'm wondering, thinking about the marketing plan, if we get targeted with families, there might be, some of us might know.
I do have that information.
Okay, great.
So, I must admit to you, I was a little bit surprised by the high number of 126. I was a little bit surprised by that high number. I pretty much anticipated the 59 to 60 homeschoolers, surprised by the number of children we have at All Saints and Bangor Christian particularly.
Our number at John Babs is defined.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, so, again-
Now, for all of those schools as opposed to homeschooling, those parents are actually paying the full tuition where they're going.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
Not the virtual.
Not the virtual.
Not the virtual.
But that's correct. And just for our new board members, and how many, I should never guess, but superintendent agreements, we're probably hovering around 10 or 12. What made me think of that is because superintendent's agreement, the money follows the child. So, we have a child that goes, they'll say, to Bangor, the money goes there. If a child comes to us from Newport, the money comes to us. So, we typically have probably 10 to 15 a year homeschoolers. I will tell you, though, as a matter of fact, I needed to talk to Lynn Wells. We had a request today for two homeschooled children, two children for superintendent's agreement that both are requiring special education, and I'm very concerned about that with respect to our position on that and how that may play itself out. And the board's talked about that in the past as well, meaning if you have two children that go to our school district that require special services above and beyond the tuition, then we have to accept the cost of that. So, I'll let you know as that transpires over the next few weeks. Any other questions on the data that we have here? As I respond to Jason, we do have the preciseness of the families, so we can work from that as well. Mr. Glencross is going to be our presenter this evening. He has some faculty members that's going to give us an overview while he's setting up-
This is the end of this conference time. Our next conference runs from 7:19 to 7:29.
One thing I'd like to ask before you start, Richard, is because you will see them during the course of the year, but I'd ask the administrators to stand up and introduce yourself, because I want to make sure that Karen, Tony, and Jason know who you are and put a name to a face, and they'll see you in future meetings. So, Kristin, could you start, please?
Sure. I'm Kristin Bray. I am the principal at the Mobergh School. This is my first year, and I am loving it, and I do see some commitment faces from my students' parents.
Right.
My name is Mary Ellen Seymour, and I'm the Assistant Director of Special Services, and I also just started this year. So, I'm great so far.
I'm Lynn Wells, and I'm the Director of Special Services. I've been in the district for, it's my 26th year in the district.
I'm Rowley Daly, I'm the Principal of Hampton Academy. I've been in the district, you know, I don't know, 28 years maybe, with a three-year vacation somewhere else.
I'm Christine Moon, I'm the Principal at Rutherford School. It is only my second year, and I think we met last week. If we hadn't met previously, I'd also really happy to invite us.
Hi, I'm Jeff Woodside, I'm the District Technology Coordinator. I've been in the district five years.
Hi, I'm Dawn Moore. I'm the Principal down in Northport Elementary School, and I was a teacher of a grad for a while, and I'm the Principal at the elementary school.
I'm Mike Bissin, I'm the Athletic Director and Assistant Principal at Hampton Academy. This is my third year here.
Nick Raymond, Assistant Principal at Hampton Academy. This is my third year in the position, and I taught math and was the Athletic Director prior to that.
I'm Reagan Nichols. I'm a teacher at Reed's Brook Middle School. I'm in my 10th year.
I'm Mary Giar, and I'm the Curriculum Director for the school system, and this is my seventh year.
Thank you. Nancy, we don't want to leave you out. Mrs. Simpson?
I'm Nancy Simpson. I'm a math teacher at Reed's Brook Middle School. This is my 26th year working in this district. I'm also past co-president of the Tri-22 Teachers Association, and currently have a lofty title of Tri-22 liaison to the school board.
So, you'll see Nancy at all meetings. Okay, Mr. Glencross.
Everyone sign up for negotiations. You all, all the new people, you're really interested in that, just so you know.
First off, I want to say thank you to Mr. Lyons for inviting me here, and our teachers, who I'll introduce in a minute, and welcome new school board members, and it's a pleasure to be here to talk tonight about some of the good things that we're doing in science programs at Wagner Middle School. So, I want to start with an eighth-grade science teacher, Cindy Moran. She focuses on physical science. Seventh-grade science teacher, Tamara Cadello, and her focus is on life sciences. Sixth grade, Chris Gould, and his focus is on earth science. And fifth grade, we have the unique, for the new school board members, the unique perspective from a school that's a 5'8" school. We're the only 5'8" school in the district, and Michelle Campbell is at fifth grade and focuses on general science. So, we're, we've been at various stages of involvement and participation with the elementary sciences partnership and the main physical sciences partnership in collaboration with the University of Maine. We brought in a number of individuals over the past few years that helped us build an effective science curriculum at Wagner, and the work is ongoing. So, I don't want you to think that we're there and we're doing this. It's ongoing, and the furthest along is our eighth grade, which we'll talk about in a minute. So, I just want to kind of show you our MEA scores from last May, and the graph up here on the monitor represents, if you go over to your far right, it says Wagner, and there's a blue column and a green column. And the blue column has a 72 at the top, and the green column, very beside it, has an A3 at the top. And what that represents is, the blue represents our fifth grade MEA scores from last May, and the green represents the eighth grade MEA scores from last May. And so, how this breaks down is 72% of our fifth graders are proficient or above, 72%. And you can see in the corresponding state average, 63% of fifth graders are proficient or above. So, we're above the state average in science at fifth grade, and likewise, at fifth grade, we had scores of 83% of our students are proficient or above compared to 73% at the state average. So, if, how that breaks down is, we have level four, which is exceeds the standard, level three is proficient, meets the standard, level two is partially, and level one is substantially below. So, you can see the breakdown by our students. So, the columns on the right are the level four and the level three students combined. So, we've done, you know, we like to reach that, those students who haven't quite gotten there yet, but we're, we've been pleased with our scores to date by recognizing that we have further work to do to get all students up to that proficient level. The key elements of the PSP and the ESP program focus on professional development and high-quality instructional resource. And it's interesting, because we talked in the Education Committee earlier tonight about a traditional science classroom and how that looks. So, I'll talk about that in a minute. But in order to get where we want to be, we need to focus on professional development opportunities, which means our teachers here spend an awful lot of time during the summer, on weekends. I think, Mrs. Moran, you're going to look, point, look out this weekend, and, so it's 60 to 240-plus hours over and above what they do in the classroom, attending a variety of types of meetings. I listed a few here, and we put a picture there just for fun of everyone collaborating on a science project. I'm not quite sure what's in the picture there, but-
Unknown substance.
Unknown substance, yeah. So, my point is that there's a lot of time putting it over and above on professional development. And what that gets us, this is what we're talking about in the Education Committee tonight. The traditional teacher on your, on my left there is the large pie on the far left represents, the light blue represents, that's lecture time in a traditional classroom, and the green piece of the pie on the far left represents a teacher asking like probing-type questions. So, you can see the vast majority of the time is spent on lecture and a little bit of time on questioning, and the purple color represents like the administrative aspect of the classroom. So, we flip over to the, to the main PSP teacher, and you can see the pie is broken into many different things. It's a little hard to see up there, but what that means is, teachers are, they're lecturing a very small portion of the class. The teachers, the students are working in small groups. They're collaborating with each other. They're working on hands-on type of activities. Teachers are conferencing with students. There's just a variety of things going on in the classroom at any given time. So, it's really exciting to go in and watch and see what the teachers are doing with students. I just put a couple of pictures of students in there, and you can see that they're working together, they're collaborating, they have their science materials out, and it's really, it's a busy, busy classroom environment through the physical science and the elementary science partnership model. Now, this, this is just some data on the MEA average, because as, you know, the last few years, we've been using the MEA to measure our science progress in, in schools. So, the blue line at the top represents the average MEA scores for PSP schools. You can see that it's above the state average, which is represented by the red scores, the red line on the graph. So, typically, they, like, in 2014, you can see PSP schools are around 80% proficient, and we were 82%, I believe, in it with our eighth graders. So, we're right, right there. Now, this is our scaled scores. I want to point out that a proficient score is 840. So, anything above the 840 is assumed would be considered proficient or above. And so, these represent the Wagner scores over the last four years. 2011 is the, that's pre-PSP for our eighth graders. These are only our eighth grade scores. 2012, we had a very good year. We had, you know, many, the mean of our scale score was, you know, around 250, and, but you can see the upward trend over the last three years, 2012, 13, and 14, it's going up. We had, I want to point out that in 2013, we had a small enrollment that year. We had an N, N meaning the number of students, of 39 in 2013, while we still increased over the 2011 year. We had very few students score below proficient, but the small number, it skewed the data somewhat. But we have an upward trend there. And I want to point out that the state average, in the green bar, you can see what it is there. It's around, you know, 70 or just above 70, and in 2011, the Wagner scores went from, you can see how they went there. So, we're well above the state average currently, and we've steady upward growth over the last four years. I think there's a lot of talk nowadays about STEM science opportunities, and so what we're seeing, and this is some data to back it up, what we're seeing at Wagner, but what also other PSP schools are seeing is that students rate themselves, they're enjoying science more. And so, students evolve, as the data on the left shows, after studying in a PSP-type classroom for three years, three or more years, that there's a very high rating of satisfaction with science. And this translates into STEM careers or interest in STEM careers. So, you can see that students report high interest in these careers after participation in these types of programs. So, that kind of sort of brings us to, to the end, and I wanted to take a few minutes. If you have any questions. Teachers are here to ask specific questions about instruction in the classroom or can answer more general questions, if you have, and thank you again for inviting us here tonight.
Questions for Richard or any other teachers? Martha?
Are you using the next-gen standards or are you using the old standards?
We are using old standards. So, this aligns pretty, very well also with our, like, our standards that we're going to be reporting out on. So, it aligns very well with that.
Cindy? I'd like to ask the teachers, what, how has this changed your experience of teaching in the science?
Ma'am, this is my second year teaching, so I didn't have too much experience previously. But, so I've only dealt with the CPUP curriculum, which is the sixth-grade curriculum, and the kids are working together, they're learning to talk to each other, and not only talking, but saying, well, disagreeing with another student properly, and then voicing their opinion. They're able to use models to represent their ideas.
This is the end of this conference time. Our next conference runs from 7:32 to 7:42.
To represent their ideas, but also they know when time is for lecture, and then come back after lecture to use that information to build upon the next lesson, which could be a model of a river, et cetera. So, it's a bunch of different ideas into one class, so.
So, I've been teaching for 26 years, and I've been with this program since the beginning five years ago. So, we implemented it with the students four years ago, and I have to tell you, the first year was sort of difficult, because I was used to more of having control, and the students worked together and collaborate together, and it's like, oh, they just, I, you know, they have to discover their learning in science, and it comes, they kept saying, like, trust the program. In the first year, it was difficult, and I think some of the students, it was a different way of learning also, and they just wanted the right answer, just give me the answer. And they, you know, now can work together and collaborate, and they actually, like, the fourth year of doing this, the students are really getting into it, and we just adopted the CPUP, like, I'm with the PBIS Project Based Inquiry Science, but the chemistry, we adopted the CPUP unit, and two years ago, there was a class that went through that actually didn't have any chemistry. So, last year was the first year with the eighth grade to get the chemistry, and we're implementing that, and it evolves, like, we meet once a month, and if there's something not going right, we change. And it evolves, like, we meet once a month, and if there's something not going right, we change that. So there's been a lot of changes, because if it was perfect, everyone in the U.S. would be using the same program. But we're trying to make it better every year.
So along those lines, on a scale of like, say, one to ten, five years ago, student engagement in your class, where would you rate them?
I would rate them with, well, I also, I like to do hands-on anyways, but I would say I have given more control to the students. So I'd say they, you know, probably, it's totally different now. I would say probably they were getting, oh, about forty percent of, like, the hands-on, and now it's more like eighty percent.
Yeah, but with them, like, with their engagement, like, I'm coming to school, I'm excited, I'm doing my work, would it follow that graph that we saw?
It would.
With that upward line? So what, what do you think your process capability is with this? You're four years into it, your line's going this way, right? And you're getting ahead of the state average. Where do you, where do you think you can get over the next couple of years?
I mean, what I hope is, we, we have a lot of challenges, but what I hope is we can get one-hundred percent. That's always the goal, you know, to try to move everybody ahead. But the fact of the matter is that, um, we serve a variety of students, and many come to school with challenges, and the likelihood of getting, getting a hundred percent is probably, uh, uh, slim, but we're going to keep trying. And I think that's, uh, that's what we can do. And, you know, but if we can go from eighty percent, eighty-two percent to ninety percent next year, I think that's a success. And try and move as many students ahead as we can.
Absolutely. Have you noticed more, uh, parent engagement? Would their kids seem to be more engaged in their classroom?
Well, I think some of the students go home, I'll, I always say, you can try this at home or not try this at home.
Oh, you knew my next question.
And I, I've had parents come back and say, oh, yeah, they came back and they were talking about, you know, show us how to do like a whirligig or, you know, one of the activities that we've had. So I think with them having it in the cross-grade level now, that we're all getting into it, that will be easier flow for them also.
Got you. So you're, when you send stuff home, it kind of re-emphasizes what they just did and then gets them ready for what you're going to do tomorrow. So if you were a board member, what would you do to help you?
Well, the funding's going away soon. So somehow we need to, um, keep that program going. And actually, at our cohort meetings, we have a, um, team that's called the Krispy Kreme Team, that we're trying to, how can we sustain this program?
I think the professional, uh, that piece, being able to collaborate, uh, not just together, but collaborate with other schools in the state, um, in the area, and, um, other professionals. And if that goes away, that, you know, we'll really be losing something.
So not just our funding, but altogether? Got you, okay. Thank you.
How many, um, schools are joining us in the state?
Oh, wow, I, we did have a slide, um, that, that showed that data. There's a lot, um, yeah.
Fifty-seven districts in the state.
Yeah.
Who's in your local cohort that you're meeting with?
Is yours part?
Our last cohort, we had, uh, people from Callis, Holton, uh...
Gardner?
Ridge Brook, I mean, it's part of it, obviously.
Right, Ellsworth, Gardner, so it's branching out every year.
And the next regional meeting this weekend's at Point Lookout, right?
And districts are still jumping on. Uh, Caravel just jumped on from, my understanding, talking, uh, to a teacher that just, was their first, uh, meeting. It was, last month was our cohort meeting. So districts are still coming, uh, coming on to this program.
I think, I think the other thing that's really nice is it's connected to the University of Maine system. So it, so it looks at the entire educate, the scope of the educational system within the state and, and, um, ties into kind of like the STEM model of education and prepares students for high school in, in a very effective way. But also utilizes, uh, methods that are applied at the university level, at, at the middle school level. So I think, um, it's very well connected that way to higher education and promoting science as, as a career, so.
Just one more question. Is there a tie-in between, uh, Hamden Academy Science Department and what you're doing here? So that when they leave your school, it kind of seamlessly transitions into?
Well, I think it gives opportunities for students to explore, like, a variety of different science options, you know, life science, and focus on that for a whole year, you know, at the middle school. So it's really, I think, exploratory, so that when they get to Hamden Academy, they're better informed about making choices in science, not for, for science. And it sparks their interest in science. So that's kind of the goal.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for the team? Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it very much.
Next item, we had a large number of people, uh, that attended the annual Maine School Management Conference. So I would invite Martha, Eric, John, Kelly, Amanda, Keith. Any relevant comments you'd like to share with, uh, our fellow board members?
Well, I will, uh, say one thing. One of my fellow state board, one of the new members of the state board, went to the program that was presented by Smith School and had some very, very nice things to say about it, uh, at the meeting today. So congratulations, apparently it went over great. I, I was not there on, on Friday, so I didn't see it myself, but it really, it really impressed Alan Burton, who is, um, from Chimbra, so. Uh, so I was only there, um, the first day, um, but as always, um, I learned stuff that was very, um, important. I went to the, uh, Performance Evaluation and Professional Growth Systems Requirement and Resources that Mary Payne, uh, did, and I thought that was, uh, very good and tied in with the stuff we've been hearing from this district. Um, I also went to Mary's presentation regarding proficiency-based, um, policies, et cetera, et cetera, and that was very good.
Thank you, Martha. Any other comments? John?
Uh, this was my, uh, third state conference for school board members, and I would urge all of the school board members, especially the new ones, to go to at least one, because you learn a lot about how to be an effective school board member and what school boards do.
Thank you, John.
Anything we could do better as a new school board member?
Anything well, learn more about, about how to do it, uh, get a broader perspective?
We also have during the course of the year, a couple of, uh, regional, um, board workshops. We're a member of a consortium called PREP, Penobscot River Educational Partnership. Uh, we have one coming up in January that I'll give you more information on next month, and we usually have one in the spring as well. So those two, plus the annual conference of Maine School Management Association is what we're talking about here. And matter of fact, we probably should talk about what Maine School Management is at a future meeting, so people know how that plays in as well, so. Cindy?
Great to add in, if there is, um, the potential for one of the new board members to end up on negotiations. You had that workshop that was coming right up around that. So maybe meeting those two together in timely fashion would make sense.
Good point, good point. Eric, any?
Yeah, I, I was only able to attend on, on Thursday. I didn't, I wasn't able to go Friday. But I went, I was also a delegate, a delegate assembly at the, at, on Thursday. I went to, uh, Basic Bargaining, just to give you a heads up on that, Kelly.
Excellent.
That was thrown by Drummond and Woodson, and that was, that was very informative. And, you know, I look forward to maybe being on the negotiations at some point. But, uh, we did, at the delegate assembly for the, um, hall conference, we, there was a pretty, uh, well-rounded discussion on a few of the topics. Uh, the support of Common Core, there was a little bit of, um, negativity toward that by a few of the districts, but it did pass, sixty-two, twenty-eight. Um, the local control, student transfers, I know that was mentioned earlier, Rick, at the superintendent's meetings. That had a very, uh, overwhelming, um, positive vote, sixty-nine to four. And last one, uh, the charter school funding, which has also been a big topic, uh, discussion around here. Um, that was also a, a very well-received resolution, seventy-six to five. Any opinion?
That'd be interesting, what would you, how would you classify the sentiment of the four people on the superintendent's, uh, agreements? Why did they vote not for that, Eric? Any sense on that?
I think it was about choice, parental choice.
Yeah, parental choice.
I would just say, um, and we have a long discussion about Maine School Management, but we definitely should, um, make sure folks are aware of what it is. I finished my year as the president of that organization, um, there on Friday, and have moved over to be immediate past president. So I spend from now till next October doing that. So I'm kind of clogging up a space that anybody new who wanted to join Maine School Management could take. But when I'm done, I clearly feel like somebody from this board, if you're interested, should, um, pursue going on that, because, um, it does help, I do think it helps having Martha on the State Board of Education and, and my, my position there, help us get, um, recognition, for one thing, as a board, but, um, which we get plenty of on our own just by doing lots and lots of good work. But it, it does help to promote our own district.
And say about it, I, at the meeting today. So congratulations, apparently it went over great. I, I was not there on, on Friday, so I didn't see it myself, but it really, it really impressed Alan Burton, who is, um, from Chimbra, so. Uh, so I was only there, um, the first day, um, but as always, um, I learned stuff that was very, um, important. I went to the, uh, Performance Evaluation and Professional Growth Systems Requirement and Resources that Mary Payne, uh, did, and I thought that was, uh, very good and tied in with the stuff we've been hearing from this district. Um, I also went to Mary's presentation regarding proficiency-based, um, policies, et cetera, et cetera, and that was very good.
Thank you, Martha. Any other comments? John?
Uh, this was my, uh, third state conference for school board members, and I would urge all of the school board members, especially the new ones, to go to at least one, because you learn a lot about how to be an effective school board member and what school boards do.
Thank you, John.
Anything we could do better as a new school board member?
Anything well, learn more about, about how to do it, uh, get a broader perspective?
We also have during the course of the year, a couple of, uh, regional, um, board workshops. We're a member of a consortium called PREP, Penobscot River Educational Partnership. Uh, we have one coming up in January that I'll give you more information on next month, and we usually have one in the spring as well. So those two, plus the annual conference of Maine School Management Association is what we're talking about here. And matter of fact, we probably should talk about what Maine School Management is at a future meeting, so people know how that plays in as well, so. Cindy?
Great to add in, if there is, um, the potential for one of the new board members to end up on negotiations. You had that workshop that was coming right up around that. So maybe meeting those two together in timely fashion would make sense.
Good point, good point. Eric, any?
Yeah, I, I was only able to attend on, on Thursday. I didn't, I wasn't able to go Friday. But I went, I was also a delegate, a delegate assembly at the, at, on Thursday. I went to, uh, Basic Bargaining, just to give you a heads up on that, Kelly.
Excellent.
That was thrown by Drummond and Woodson, and that was, that was very informative. And, you know, I look forward to maybe being on the negotiations at some point. But, uh, we did, at the delegate assembly for the, um, hall conference, we, there was a pretty, uh, well-rounded discussion on a few of the topics. Uh, the support of Common Core, there was a little bit of, um, negativity toward that by a few of the districts, but it did pass, sixty-two, twenty-eight. The local control, student transfers, I know that was mentioned earlier, Rick, at the superintendent's meetings. That had a very, uh, overwhelming, um, positive vote, sixty-nine to four. And last one, uh, the charter school funding, which has also been a big topic, uh, discussion around here. Um, that was also a, a very well-received resolution, seventy-six to five. Any opinion?
That'd be interesting, what would you, how would you classify the sentiment of the four people on the superintendent's, uh, agreements? Why did they vote not for that, Eric? Any sense on that?
I think it was about choice, parental choice.
Yeah, parental choice.
I would just say, um, and we have a long discussion about Maine School Management, but we definitely should, um, make sure folks are aware of what it is. I finished my year as the president of that organization, um, there on Friday, and have moved over to be immediate past president. So I spend from now till next October doing that. So I'm kind of clogging up a space that anybody new who wanted to join Maine School Management could take. But when I'm done, I clearly feel like somebody from this board, if you're interested, should, um, pursue going on that, because, um, it does help, I do think it helps having Martha on the State Board of Education and, and my, my position there, help us get, um, recognition, for one thing, as a board, but, um, which we get plenty of on our own just by doing lots and lots of good work. But it, it does help to promote our own district, and I have learned a lot. I think it's made me a better leader, um, and so, anyway, for what that's worth. And I didn't hardly attend anything, because I was very busy running delegate assembly and running like a chicken about, you know, they need you over again, you need to do this, that kind of thing. But, um, it is a very, very good conference, and you get a lot of, uh, lots and lots of good legal...
This is the end of this conference time. Our last conference for the evening will run from seven-forty-five to seven-fifty-five.
It's interesting to all the potential legal pitfalls that other districts have experienced in the last year or two. Um, so there's lots of interesting things to talk about there.
And next year, it's the twenty-second and twenty-third of October. Put it on your calendar.
Amanda?
Um, yeah, this is my first year, no, I mean, it's my first year on the board. And, um, I, I was very impressed. The number of breakout sessions were great. I wish I could attend more, actually. Um, I'm looking at my phone, because I downloaded the app that they use. Did you guys do that? And I took notes in it, um, at each of my, um, breakout sessions, so I would be happy to share any of the notes. Particularly, one that, um, really caught me off guard was I went to the meet with Commissioner, um, Commissioner of Education, and all it was, was a question-answer. And people had a lot of questions about proficiency-based diplomas, um, charter schools, and I was taken aback by the lack of answers for all of those, so it was, um, eye-opening. Um, so I wonder why we're confused, because the direction, we aren't getting a lot of correction for it, so. Um, but I'd be happy to share any of my notes with anyone. I can just cut and paste them into an email.
Thank you, Amanda. Keith?
Um, I attended on Thursday. Um, one of the meetings I went to was a proficiency-based diploma put on by the Department of Ed. Um, very interesting thing that I, I learned there, and I believe, uh, is our application? And Mary may answer this. Um, are we, we're one-hundred percent ready in two thousand and eighteen? Is that, is that what our application is for? We are, we're not asking for any?
We did ask for an extension only for the guiding principles.
Only for the guiding principles, okay. So that, that's basically what they were talking about in there, is, and, and to reassure us, that there was many more districts asking for a lot more than that. So we're, nothing to be ashamed of on that, as far as that goes. Um, and then I went to an interesting meeting on, uh, when good boards go bad. And there was a lot of interesting stories about, about, uh, many different things that board members could do to other board members to make a disgruntled board. And, uh, there was a lawyer there that was, that represented some municipality boards also. Uh, Hamden was mentioned very, quite a few times during the meeting about disgruntled boards, as far as I can, or your can, not mine.
But, but I'm assuming that was several years in the past where people were disrentaled on the board?
I don't think it was.
No, we're talking about the...
No, we're talking about the, the...
Oh, oh, the town council there. Never mind.
Martha, can you give us an update on the commissioner?
Um, he is in rehab. Um, he's in contact with, with his people. Rochelle Tone is now the acting commissioner. She had her first, what do you call it, uh, meeting with the governor today since he was elected. And so she was a little late for our meeting. We were meeting in Monmouth today. Um, but I mean, it's anticipated he will have full recovery, so.
Any idea on how long he'll be gone, Martha, absent? Any idea on how long he'll be gone, Martha, absent?
They aren't, they aren't saying at this point. And he definitely needs to take care of himself and get fully recovered before he comes back because he, he's not been to well for several months, so. But you should also know, we rejected the last, the latest appeal of superintendent's agreement.
Nice.
Today. Okay?
That's good to hear.
Unanimously.
Great. Okay, next item is the update on public forums. The education committee, I'll ask Niles to chime in on this one. They had a great, rich conversation this evening. The theme is, this conversation will continue. The ed committee had a number of questions tonight, not surprisingly, and then gave some direction for Mary and me to move forward. I will update the full board, though, that we've had approximately five hundred and thirty responses to the survey on the website. We don't know how many of those are duplicate, but we've had five hundred and thirty responses. We had approximately a hundred and twenty-five people to two public forums. So we have reached out. The committee is basically looking for a greater definition as to what the time looks like, what really is the, what is the problem, if you will. And I think we have some good directives to move forward over the next two to three or four months as well. So Niles, do you want to add to that?
Not a lot to add to that. I mean, really, to this point, that committee's dealings on this topic's really been a hypothetical one, sort of just a what-if. And I think factoring all the feedback we've received from the public now will be important as we, as we try to go forward. I think we really, unless we begin to establish some kind of a plan, we have nothing to move forward with. So I think that's the next step.
So I would encourage you, if you have an interest, to participate and observe in the education committee meetings that will be held in the coming months, and we'll report obviously to the full board when we have those respective meetings, so. And let's see. All right, and Olivia, what's going on?
You can go first. Fall sports are all wrapping up. I think there's some in their banquets around this time. Winter sports are starting up next week, and tomorrow JCL is going to the fall convention at Greeley. So it's, I think it's like fifty kids that are going to go to that, and it's a big deal. Also, last week, the math team had their second math meet at Brewer. I think we're ranked five, fifth right now or something. And the cross-country team had a great season. They won Eastern Maine championships. And just right now is the beginning of the second quarter, and parent teaching, parent teacher conferences are going on throughout the district.
We also, Mr. Bisson, had three athletes that ran in Connecticut at the New England's.
Yeah, Caspian and Ford and Elizabeth, I believe, and the two Connecticut...
I think the Caspian, I was talking to Mr. Valentine today, I think the Caspian boy came in eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, and Kev came in ninety-nine.
Yeah, right.
Elizabeth was in the hundreds.
Right. And also, Mr. Valentine is the coach of the year.
He is the coach.
Cross-country coach of the year, so that's a nice acknowledgement.
And, and very rare for both your boys and girls teams to be KVAC champions and Eastern Maine champions, so just an outstanding season. Girls finished third in the state and the boys finished third.
Great. Okay, and Mr. Janest is on vacation, so he has no report. He didn't indicate...
It's in our packet.
One thing in your packet, yes.
A very nice note about our bus.
Yes, that's all I have coming. Thank you.
Questions of board members? Are there any questions this superintendent can answer? John?
I would like to propose that this district set up ad hoc, fairly short-term committee, specifically with reference to the request that we're about to receive from the Hampden Academy Library. And I would volunteer to be on said committee.
That's a great point, John. I'll have that on the next agenda, December third. In fact, Mrs. Yehli, I met on that briefly today, but I'll have that on the agenda. Thank you.
So folks that are new, we are receiving money from an estate, and there were some stipulations with that, and we're working our way through that with attorneys, but it's not an insubstantial amount of money.
It is not an insubstantial...
Three hundred thousand dollars is pretty significant.
Yes.
That's just the part to the library. There's also one or two other pieces that are, I think, less, less tied down.
We should, we should, in my conversation with the attorney, the end result is we should have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our school system. I graduated from Hampden Academy many years ago. Just so you know, and we'll do this further, but Mrs. Yehli and I met today, we will be constructing a plaque, and we have obviously the official name of the, of the bequest, remember the exhibit I gave you? We'll have that displayed at the library, and then I'll bring the topic to the board on the third of December.
So we're a little late to the education committees, so we missed the update on the success we may have had since the additional assistance for eye observations and everything like that. Just if we could just take a minute and update since...
Yeah, thank you, Jason. That's good. As you know, graciously, the board has dedicated approximately thirty thousand dollars. So if I could go by each school, K through eight, Reeves Brook, Mrs. Nichols is utilizing her assistant principal to help her in the management task to give her a greater focus on supervision evaluation. Mr. Glencross is hiring a fourteen-hour educational technician in his school. Mrs. Briggs is utilizing her guidance counselor. Currently, she works eighty percent, so the other day will help Mrs. Briggs at McGrath. Mrs. Boone, Mrs. Boone is, oh, is having a retired principal, Carla Lethem, that's working in her school to help her there. And then who am I missing? Mrs. Moore is utilizing Mr. Bartlett, who is her undesignated assistant principal, because we don't have the title there, but she's utilizing Russ Bartlett to help her in the school. So we have, all schools have been identified for that resource. Anyone want to comment further on that? Don, Kristen, Tina, Richard, or Reagan, anything else you want to add?
Our first is necessary, not only, we're doing it two days, two days a week.
Okay.
It's a big help so far.
So I would categorize people's sentiment as it's, it's a nice welcome, it's working well, and you're optimistic it will continue to work well the remainder of the year. Is that a fair summary?
Yeah.
And we'll put a plan together to propose to the ed committee for sustainability of that in future years. That's where we are. Thank you, Jason. That's a good point.
So we feel good about hitting the, hitting the mark?
Yeah.
Perfect. Yes, it smiles, that's good.
I have a question. All right, committee reports. Athletic committee, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, this was back in October, middle of October. First topic that we spoke about was the impact, or I shouldn't say the impact, the concussion policy at the middle school, which will be implemented in the spring. And we'll start with basketball and also with the cheerleaders. As you know, when they get to high school, they have the impact test and they have a baseline. This will now be the SCAP two, is what it's called, and it'll be piloted at the middle schools, and that'll be implemented in the spring, which will be nice because then they'll have a baseline before they even get to the school, high school. White's contract, just a little bit of history on that. We were involved with a three-year contract with White's as far as purchasing equipment, sporting gear and whatnot. And that wasn't, that was also purchasing at a discount, but then we got volume discounts as the more we purchased, the more volumes went up. So we negotiated, renegotiated that, and it looks as though we're going to have another percent added to it, which is nice. I don't have the amount, I think it was a few thousand dollars, Mike, the amount that we received that came back.
Yes, this year was thirty-eight hundred dollars of refunded equipment. Basically, we take that money in equipment for that value.
Yeah.
The year before was one of that...
This will conclude our parent teacher conferences for this evening. Thank you all for coming. Have a great night.
With all the new track equipment and so on, we purchased a lot that first year in the school, so we got a really big rebate that year. So the challenge for us in our negotiations is how do we increase the amount of sales that is going through White's? Do we reach out to some other community members and ask them to purchase through us using our name, and then we would get credit for those sales and increase our percent and get more money back?
Yeah. Which you talked about, it's like the Little League, Pete Houston, you know, Nick Winchester is in the travel program, so different entities inside of the community that can also purchase through, to bump us up to another level. Nordic skiing with the new trails that we now have out back, there's new interest in that, to try and find some funds that were possibly unused or unfunded. That was an unfunded sport previously, but to resurrect that program would be nice, especially with now the new facility out back. We also...
Would you like an update on where we are with that?
Yeah, if there's something between October and now, sure.
Yes, we did not find a full-time coach to do that, so we will be in partnership with Orno and John Babbs as we were last year, but hoping to partner with the Penobscot Valley Ski Club, Dan Perkins, one of their folks has volunteered with us a couple of days a week so our kids can practice here on our facility, then travel to meetings with John Babbs and, so it's kind of a, kind of in between where we wanted to be, but with, with the lack of funding, that's probably the best route to kind of build some interest and get that back.
Yeah. Thanks. The wrestling program, we've had, also, we've been partnering with Brewer. It looks like Brewer's program was waffling at one point. We've participated fifty percent in used our facility, used our mats and whatnot, but we've participated as far as fifty percent of the cost for that. And it looked like their program was maybe going to fold. We did have a backup plan as far as with Nikolas, and I think that that is going to happen with Brewer, Mike.
We interviewed and hired a coach. His name is Eric Cole. He's a Brewer graduate. He met with our kids today, and they will practice at Brewer on Monday and Tuesday, have meets on Wednesday, practice a handicap me on Thursday and Friday, so it is a fifty-fifty share. We have two home meets, one will be at Brewer and one will be here.
And the last thing, I think that you can sit down, I think, I think you get to the last one, is the Hall of Fame. We have a Hall of Fame discussion, which is moving forward, and we're at the point where our bylaws have been written up. Everything is really there except for what is it really going to look like, and also the people that are going to sit on the Hall of Fame Committee. So we did have an appointment to meet with, to go over and look at Hassan's Brewer, and there was one more, I think it was Orno's, and there was some conflicts as far as scheduling conflicts, but that's going to be rescheduled and that will move forward.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Moore, Mr. Bisson on athletics or their report?
Sorry, I asked a lot of questions, but on the Hall of Fame part, do we still do like alumni games? I'm kind of out of touch.
Yeah, there hasn't been? No.
Because when you mentioned Hall of Fame, I just remember back when, twenty years ago, they used to draw quite a crowd and raise a bunch of money for, I think maybe the Blues or something like that, when you were talking about funding different sports.
Yeah. There's been some discussion, not to put more things on Mike's plate, but there's been some discussions as far as alumni, not only as far as alumni playing alumni here, but alumni playing alumni from Bangor. And to have like, you know, an eighties game or a nineties game...
A do-over.
And to, to...
Yeah.
So there's different ideas that are floating around at the committee on that.
Let me know if you need any help there.
Mike, did you have something on that?
Just not a huge fan of alumni games. After seeing people tear Achilles and so on, and they're trying to keep up with eighteen-year-olds. And then they have to take two months off from Hannover because they've blown their ACL or Achilles. So there's a lot of bad things that can happen and those. It is fun, but I've seen, hopefully, here's a lot of mishaps for my generation.
You think we're twenty?
I don't, I don't.
All right, anything else on athletics? We had a brief, we talked a little bit about education committee. You want to add?
Not much to add really between the update on the eye observation and...
Okay, great. So policy, and that's Eric?
Yes, we had to postpone our policy meeting. It was scheduled on the snow day. So we'll have to set up a meeting, another policy meeting at the end of tonight's meeting. But we were going to discuss the regulation, JICHR, which is vacco products, drug and alcohol used by students. And we'd also, we were also going to discuss...
Distribution of flyers.
Yeah, distribution of promotional, commercial material, regulation, KHC. Can you elaborate on why that was then brought up?
Basically, Eric, that's, we have a policy, distribution of flyers, and the bottom line is once you distribute a flyer, you distribute all flyers. Now, I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that because about three weeks ago, that hit the Portland Press Herald whereby SAD fifty-four distributed the flyer for Bible school after school, and we also distributed the same flyer, by the way. And I just want to make sure the board was aware that that is our current policy, and if we don't like it, we need to modify and craft a new policy. And if we want to craft a new policy, you have to go to, you don't distribute anything because the Supreme Court's very clear on this. Once you distribute a flyer, you don't advocate the theme or the premise, you're simply the third person distributing the information to parents by which they can choose to partake or not. So I just want to make sure the policy committee and the board will be fully aware that we have this operational currently, and if we have any intent to change it, then we should direct the policy to do so. So basically, the information base, whether anything else.
Thanks. Any questions for John?
At some point in the near future, is the policy committee going to come back to us with a policy with reference to video cameras? I don't think we've settled that one yet.
We are working on it, or we have worked on it.
I'm not familiar with that one. Video cameras?
For taping the taping board meetings.
No, no, on the school buses and in the, and the schools.
Okay.
Surveillance case?
Yes, okay. I'll check with the email, you might use all that, John.
Two meetings, right?
Yes.
Two meetings we've worked on.
Okay. I haven't, okay. All right, thank you.
Alcohol, vacco, and other drugs are the name of that policy. Was that, is that an annual, annual review or was that triggered by what triggered the...
What we're working on now is the regulation. We're working with Mrs. Yehli, Principal Yehli, on that, you know, for, for her, you know, there's just so much information in there and so in depth that, you know, we wanted to collaborate with her on that to make sure everybody's on the same page.
And there's so many new things, too, that are kind of coming out in the public with these e-cigarettes and those other types of, you know, drugs, but we just got to keep continuously updating that.
There's a few policies I call frequent flyers. Graduation policy is one that we do every year. The tobacco policy is one every year. So there's two or three that we're really front and center on an annual basis.
John, any UTC updates?
No particular updates, although I think at the next board meeting, I'll have some moderately big news about UTC. On the other hand, the enrollment at UTC is up roughly twelve or fifteen percent, and it's stayed there. In some past years, twenty or thirty kids have dropped out between September and November, and it's only been about five or six dropouts this year. So their, their enrollment is substantially up.
Is it up here as well?
UTC is the United Technology Center of Volk School that our students attend on Hogan Road, and we will have a meeting there in the spring so all board members can get an opportunity to see that facility. Mrs. Yehli, do you have any idea when our enrollment would be at UTC ballpark?
Oh, it's over seventy.
Over seventy, so that's up, that's up from past, from past years.
At the bus in the morning, we just can barely fit all the students on one bus. There's probably five or six seats that there's three students to us.
And we don't have any, a committee report, but in your packet, you'll see the suspension information from Hampden Academy, and people are asking about that not having been presented before, so there's a couple of things on there. Usually, we don't have their names.
You shouldn't have any.
The rest of us don't.
That's mine. That's what you have. You didn't see that.
I can't remember it, but I, I...
You have my packet.
I see a lot of PHI day in and day out, so I'm all, I'm all good with that.
Thank you.
All right, so good. I'm glad everyone else doesn't have my name. All right. There is no policy consideration tonight?
No.
Old or new business?
That's correct.
All right, so it's a very unusual meeting for those of you attending your first one. We might get out of here at a fairly decent pace. So communication correspondence, that meeting date.
As Eric mentioned, we do need a policy committee. So that's Eric and Martha right now.
And for those folks that are new, you're, feel free to attend any of the committee meetings to kind of get a feel for what your interest areas might be. to kind of get a feel for what your interest areas might be. Next week's not good, we have our retreat anyway, so it would have to be after Thanksgiving, I think.
So why don't you, after Thanksgiving? Or do you want, you want to say it now, Eric, or do you want to wait until December 3rd?
Is there anything going on December 3rd? Can we do it before, before the December 3rd?
The Ed Committee meeting, but Mary will, 6 o'clock, policy on December 3. Also, 6 o'clock would be the Ed Committee on December 3. Mr. Moore, do you need an Athletic Committee?
We're going to say the 3rd tentatively until I speak to my...
Everything on the 3rd, okay?
6 o'clock.
Great. So 6 o'clock, policy, Ed Committee, and Athletic Committee. And then again, as we stated earlier tonight, our retreat next week on Wednesday and Thursday.
Is that it? An executive session?
No, ma'am.
Any other business? So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
It's been moved in seconded. Any objections to adjourning? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.